I'm going to call the meeting to order at 7:40. Roll call, William Johnston.
Here.
Al Scalfino.
Here.
Lynn Colligan.
Here.
Lisa Kreckler.
Here.
Phil Diori is here. We also have President Tim Hill, ZBA Attorney. First order of business is to review and approve the July 23rd, 2025 minutes. Could I have a motion?
Oh, my goodness. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so on our hearing agenda, we have three applications tonight. The first is AD North Ferry Road, Sylvester Manor. We had asked them for a list of activities that are currently happening at the property. I asked for the two lots. I see that some of the things are not exactly clear which I mean they're clear, some of the things are not on those lots.
Mr. Kevin, excuse me.
Oh, sorry. I apologize.
I just want to enter correspondence.
Okay, I'm sorry. Slow me down here.
David Gregor in support of the application.
Thank you. And so is there someone here that's going to present for Sylvester Manor? Yes?
Sure, yes. Hi, good evening, board members. Karen Ho on behalf of Sylvester Manor. At the last meeting back in June, we listened to the board's comments and some of the questions that they had raised, and on August 13th, we had submitted a letter identifying the uses where they currently exist at Sylvester Manor, provided a chart breaking out those uses, and also the location of those uses pursuant to the tax maps that are consistent with the application. We also discussed our responses with Mr. Hit, Mr. Hill, to make sure that we were responding to the board's comments. In that letter, we identified how those uses are of the same general character as an educational institution, which is mainly educational programming and workshops focused on sports, culture, and history. We're available to answer any questions that the board has, and I know Mr. Stierl, the Executive Director of Sylvester Manor, also wanted to make a few comments to the board regarding some of the issues that came up at the last meeting. So I'll turn it over to him, and then we can answer any questions.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening. Thank you, everybody. Steven Stierl, Executive Director of Sylvester Manor. I know that there was some at the last meeting that we had in June, there were some misconceptions, I think, and even some misrepresentations about our burial grounds at Sylvester Manor. I thought it would be helpful to just kind of clarify that, if you don't mind. If you don't mind indulging me.
Please.
Okay, thank you. I'll just be a few minutes. So we have two burial grounds at Sylvester Manor, which is 236 acres total. Both are contributing resources to our historic district and its designation on the state and federal registers of historic places as nationally significant. They are depicted in both surveys and maps that we've previously submitted to this board. And since our founding is a non-for-profit, we've expanded our understanding of the burial grounds, of both burial grounds, and how they relate to the property as a whole. On the Afro-Indigenous burial ground in particular, it's roughly a rectangular area, about just under 12,000 square feet, about a quarter of an acre in total. It's centrally located in the southern portion of the Manor House property. It occupies a small wooded hill. It's about two tenths of a mile from Route 114. It consists of unmarked graves with a boundary that historically has been delineated by an old fence. Our archaeology team from UMass Boston, which has been working with us for the past 30 years, recently embarked on a project to better understand the size, the scope, the extent of the burial ground. This project is supported by the Mellon Foundation, and it's also conducted in partnership with members of the Chinacock Indian Nation. We did this because we want to know how many people are buried there and whether the burial ground is in fact larger than we think it is. So this past spring, they spent a lot of time building on previous work, utilizing ground penetrating radar, and they concluded that it is in fact contained within the existing fence line, that most likely people were buried there sometime between 1651 and the last known burial in 1908, and that the field stones arranged on the surface generally correspond with grave shafts. So the team essentially estimated that we, that that burial ground in particular probably does not contain more than 100 people, perhaps more like 70, 80. On top of that, in the past four years, we've held a Juneteenth celebration with around 80 people attending this past year, and they read aloud the names of all the individuals, Indigenous, enslaved, free people of color, from across Shelter Island and around the region that are known to be buried there. We think we have names of 70 people that correspond with that burial ground. We also shared at that ceremony information and stories about them from our archival materials. So we continue, we're continuing this archaeological research. We're continuing the primary source of research, and we hope to know more about this, more about that burial ground over time. The other burial ground that we have that I just again wanted to correct for the record is we have one at the Quaker Corner. I think many of you are familiar with that because it is marked. That is occupied in a fenced area from within woodlands close to Gardner's Creek. It's about a mile off of 114. That's about 2,100 square feet or about 1/20 of an acre. So it's quite a bit smaller. 19 headstones are present with the names of Sylvester descendants from the 18th century, along with Daniel Brown, a leading resident of Shelter Island. A large monument was erected in 1884, which commemorates the persecuted 17th century Quakers who found refuge at Sylvester Manor. It's a fascinating story. Our archaeology team found that there are more burials than headstones would indicate, which means that some stones were probably lost to time, or in the tradition of early Quakers, some graves were actually never marked. Just to, just a note here that community member Liz Hanley recently spent some of her personal time cleaning the existing headstones. We're very grateful for her help. As with the Afro-Indigenous burial ground, this family plot will continue to receive our time and attention. Lastly, on a slightly different note, we did also just receive $100,000 grant from the African-American Cultural Heritage Action Fund. It's a very prestigious grant that's given through the National Trust for Historic Preservation. We received that back in July, and it reflects the importance of African-American history at Sylvester Manor. So we continue to make progress on the fundraising front and look forward to making progress with you all, too. Any questions about that or anything else? I'm happy to answer. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Your bag fell over there.
Yes.
Okay, so you submitted to us a list. It's a pretty extensive list of activities that happened at Sylvester Manor at the current time. And, you know, we, the, the, the special permit that you're applying for is covered in 133-6D of the Shelter Island zoning code, and it talks about the permitted principal uses requiring a special permit from the ZBA. And there's a list of five things, and then number six is any use of the same general character as any of the uses here specifically permitted in this section. And I'd like to, if it's possible, if you'll indulge me, and we could kind of go through the list that you submitted to us, and we could look at the things on the 133-6. Christina, can you pop that on the screen, 133-6? Is that possible?
Christina's doing that. I'd like to have someone from Sylvester Manor who assisted with the chart.
Great.
How often then we can discuss all of it together and?
I think that's, that's perfect.
Okay. Let's get a better copy of this.
Hi, Julia Brennan.
Then Christine, do you have the 133-6 out there somewhere?
Again? Yeah, I could hear one. I did.
Yeah, can we look at the other first, just so that every, see kind of what the requirements are?
Much better.
133-6, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's just a typo, I think. Yeah, it is. Yeah.
You're right.
Yeah, it's dr.
So.
I grabbed the wrong section.
Sure, do you want, Lynn, will you read them just for the record that we have them on the?
I believe. I think just the.
Just the header, yes.
Just the header.
36.
Yeah, the B underneath it's 133-6, yeah. Sorry about that.
That says five.
It says five, but it's six.
Right.
So let's do this, and let's just.
Okay, so then everybody can see, Lynn, will you just read them?
Yes, permitted, so 133-6D, and on the screen it says five, but that's just a typo. Permitted principal uses requiring a special permit by the ZBA. Item one, clubs, private or nonprofit organizations and/or facilities associated with such clubs. Two, riding rings, non-commercial. Three, educational institutions subject to the following requirements. A, no building shall be less than 50 feet from any street or boundary line. B, any school shall be a nonprofit organization within the meaning of the Internal Revenue Act and shall be registered effectively thereunder as such. Four, nursery schools and/or daycare centers subject to the following requirement. A, if operated within a dwelling, no more than five children shall be enrolled. Item five, a two-family dwelling. Or six, any use of the same general character as any of the uses herein specifically permitted in this section.
So just, just so that everybody understands, what we are looking for is how the list of things that you've submitted to us fit within these parameters so that they are sort of eligible to get permitted through this process.
Okay, so we can run through that, and as we stated, you know, that the uses, you know, this is an interesting code provision.
It's, 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 it's.
It is what it is, so we're working with what we have. And the, the educational institution, as even though that's not specifically defined in the code, provides a vast range of learning experiences and workshops and education and cultural and arts and history, and that's all of the items that we've identified, and we've broken it down per kind of topic. So we have arts and culture.
Okay, so maybe we could just run through those things and, you know, it's, the first thing is?
So the first thing is archaeological.
Okay.
So the Fisk Center for Architectural, I'm sorry, Archaeological Research at the University of Massachusetts is our consulting aspect for archaeological studies at Sylvester Manor. As a component of the work that they do, which helps us better understand what Sylvester Manor is all about, what the long history of Sylvester Manor was, they give a workshop while they are doing a field school. If they're there doing a dig, they invite the public to come in and learn about not just the processes of the archaeological dig, but also if they find artifacts, they can explain how they might relate to the history of Sylvester Manor specifically, to Shelter Island generally, to this region more broadly, and so on and so forth. So they are free and open to the public and occur periodically when we have a dig going on.
Okay.
So that's an educational program that also kind of hits in arts and cultural aspects as well.
All right, next up, Black History Month.
So for Black History Month, we try to create programming of our own or work with partner organizations on the East End so that we can share information with them and they can share information with us, and we present different types of programs for the public. Again, some of them are ticketed events. If they're a big event, maybe at the Bay Street Theater in Zike Harbor, they might be a ticketed event, but if there's something that we're doing there, Sylvester Manor on the grounds, it would be free and open to the public. And we also do a lot of things on Instagram and things like that these days, social media posts, just more informative work, but they have in the past been in-person workshops and programs for people to attend.
All right, community events at the farm?
Community events at the farm. So we'll have, we just had a vegetable derby, for instance. So the veggie derby at the farm is a way to engage the community in joining our farmers who are there as people who are learning the process of farming, so there's an educational capacity for them as people who are learning how to improve their, expand their own farming knowledge, to have to interact with the public. It's a very important part of their own apprenticeship, and for the public to come and have a fun way to look at vegetables, something that, doing it in a different way than they may have before, which is to turn them into race cars and race them down a track. It's a very, very highly popular event, right? People got very good turnout at the last one, and it's quite competitive. You might not be surprised to hear that, but people get very competitive about their zucchini cars.
Okay, all right, Creekside Concert?
So the Creekside Concert is something that we do with Suffolk County Parks Department.
Yes.
So we offer, it's a ticketed event. People can come and enjoy music.
When you say it's a ticketed event, is it a fundraiser per se?
I think it's. It covers the cost of presenting a program, and again, the Suffolk County provides us with the stage. We have minimal electrification, and it's over, everybody's out of, out of the place by 7:30, 8:00 at night.
Okay, and where's, like, I'm reaching for the extra, the educational.
It's more of, again, not all of our educational work fits into an educational institution. We aren't a school. People aren't coming to us to get grades or be matriculated. They're coming to learn. This is a way of learning about music that you might otherwise not have exposure to. Very often, we'll have different Americana roots music there, people who don't perform necessarily in venues that otherwise are available here on Shelter Island.
The Fall Farm Festival.
Again, this is another kind of family fun opportunity for people, to bring people onto the farm and learn about farming while you don't realize you're learning about it. We, this time we're having pig roast. Is that correct, Tracy? We raise pigs at Sylvester Manor. Some people aren't aware of that because they're not front and center in the windmill field, but we do raise pigs and pig roasts to a future of the war and will. So it's a way of just educating people about the fun and activities of the farm.
All right, garden, horticulture, preservation, and rehabilitation.
So this was something that I actually participated in a few times, and I continue. Personally, I learned a great deal about the challenges of gardening in an environment where you have deer kind of everywhere. The gardens at Sylvester Manor have had many different iterations. They famously once were very beautiful and had all different kinds of plants from around the world. Mrs. Fisk took particular pride in the garden, and we have had experts on horticulture come and lead workshops where we actually go into the gardens and try to identify the remnants of these plants that are left from Ali's days at Sylvester Manor, and then learn how we can conserve them and make them kind of hang on until we get the funding that we need in order to do a larger look at gardening. We also talk about gardening in the future and how perhaps some of the practices that we've engaged in in the past aren't really suitable for the climate that we're in, that native species may do a little bit better here, and that kind of thing. So there's numerous opportunities in our horticultural programs to talk about educational aspects of horticulture.
Okay, guided tours.
So we will have different tours of either outdoors, sometimes indoors, depending on what the subject matter of the tour is. They range from all sorts of topics. I know Sarah has conducted tours that have to do with the history of the property, looking toward the future of how we might react to changes as climate changes, and we have rising sea levels and things like that. So we, we use all parts of these subject lots to educate people about, the thing that makes Sylvester Manor so interesting and unique is that it's, it's there the way that it existed for a really long time. And when you look at other places in the town, they've had a lot of history of intervention. At Sylvester Manor, there's not a whole lot of intervention, and you can see the impacts of nature there in a way that can be very informative. We also give historical tours about things that are going on in the Afro-Indigenous burial ground. We might focus on the Quakers and the Quaker cemetery. We'll talk about some of the things that are in the house and whatnot. So just generally educational information for people to take.
Okay, the Juneteenth Celebration, I think you already covered that.
We covered that.
Porch Talks.
So porch talks is something that we use to describe talks that happen outside on our porches. If we have up to about 25 people, we can comfortably sit in the shade of an evening, about 4:00 or 5:00 o'clock in the afternoon, and we'll have a speaker come in to deliver a talk on a subject of interest. It might have something to do with the house, it might have something to do with the history of Sylvester Manor. Archaeology. Let me just add Dr. Steve, who's the chief archaeologist at the Fisk Center and who has been working on property for 40 years, came and gave a porch talk that was very well received. Sometimes we'll have authors whose subject matter coincides with some of the themes that we cover at Sylvester Manor, and they'll come and talk about their experiences. Even Sherrod and I gave a porch talk not that long ago in connection with the Friday Night Dialogues program at the library. We talked about the process of cataloging the items that we have on the Manor House. So very educational.
Sculpture at Sylvester Manor?
The sculpture exhibit at Sylvester Manor, this is our second year of conducting the exhibit. It's run by Tom Kupulani, curates it. He brings together artists from across the East End, and they install sculptures. There is a kickoff reception where people can come and meet these different artists as they go around and tour their works and learn about not only the process of making the art, but why they chose the particular piece of art, what inspired them in the landscape of Sylvester Manor to bring this piece of art, or sometimes to create a piece of art specifically for this exhibit. It's a free tour. Anybody can go on it. It's available, and it allows people to see artwork that they might otherwise not typically find here on Shelter Island.
And there's another sculpture at Sylvester.
And one of them was like a kickoff recession.
Oh, I see, I see, I see.
Meeting with people, and then the other one was actually going up the trails and doing the tour. So I kind of.
The Shakespeare at Sylvester Manor?
Shakespeare at Sylvester Manor is a program that we've done. This was restarted this year after a little hiatus because of COVID, where we have a local director put together a troupe of actors. They rehearse for about a week, and then they perform Shakespeare production. It's online. It's a wonderful opportunity for people to come with their families, spread out, have a picnic, and have Shakespeare. So very educational.
Tea and Tree Holiday Celebration.
So the Tea and Tree Holiday Celebration is something that I believe was started by the Fisk. Yes, so Andrew and Alice Fisk started the Tea and Tree Holiday Celebration. For most people, it was the only time they ever set foot inside of Sylvester Manor was Tea and Tree, and it was an open house. Anyone in the community could come. We still run it that way. Of course, people are allowed to set foot inside Sylvester Manor now. It's all over the country. But it's a continuation of an opportunity to come as a community, come together and talk about the holidays and see how it's decorated for the holiday season.
Wellness Programs.
We have a number of different instructors, instructors who run different workshops. It can be yoga or meditation or something like that.
And are those things people pay to attend?
People do pay to attend them, but they're competitive with what the local, you know, prices are. It's not a fundraiser. It's to pay the instructor their time.
And so this is something that's run by Sylvester Manor?
We make Sylvester Manor available to instructors.
So it's.
To do something out.
So folks are using the property?
Yeah.
Okay, they're not employees.
They're members of the public, and they're using the property, and it's, not everybody can come.
Windmill Lighting?
Windmill Lighting, again, is another event. It's, it's a really quick event. It's not quite as fast as the Turkey Plunge, but it's close because it's usually very cold out, and we flip on the lights on the windmill, and people cheer and have a cup of hot chocolate, and, you know, the children run around everywhere. It's an opportunity to bring people to the farm, to celebrate this agrarian tradition that the windmill represents. The windmill is not the Sylvester Manor windmill. It's actually the Shelter Island windmill, and we're very proud to have been able to restore this windmill. Our hope is to eventually get it functioning so that we can actually demonstrate how rain would have been ground in that space, and it's, again, a fun event for people to connect with farming and to have be part of their lives.
All right, so now we're into the next category, educational programming, farm apprentices.
So Sylvester Manor has farm apprentices who come from April till October, November. Typically, there's five or six apprentices who will be at varying levels of experience, and we put out a call for apprentices. People answer the call, and we have a selection of apprentices. They come, they're paid, they have housing, and for many of them, it's an opportunity to maybe focus on an aspect of their own growth as a young farmer. Maybe they need some time working on a tractor. Maybe they need some time working on some of the different types of crops that they haven't worked on before. We get people who might have come from different parts of the world. We get people who have come from different parts of the country, and it's an opportunity for us, for our farmer, to educate young farmers.
Farm Summer Farmers.
So summer farmers is a sort of variation of that. These are typically college parents who come during their summer break. Lately, they've been living in the farmhouse that we recently purchased and brought back into the fold at Sylvester Manor, but they likewise will come and spend a couple of months in their summer semesters. Right, Stephen, do you have any more?
Yes.
And again, they're also paid, and they are provided with housing.
Forest Program for Ages 3 to 4.
The Forest Program for Ages 3 to 4 is something that's run by an instructor on the grounds of Sylvester Manor. She organizes it. She recruits the children and their families and operates the program at Sylvester Manor.
And does this person work for Sylvester Manor, or is it someone who is using the property?
Using the property.
Thank you.
She has permission to use the property.
Okay.
It's an outdoor school.
Higher Learning Partnerships.
So this is, this is a sampling. So Bard Graduate Center, Columbia University, NYU, UMass, the University of Michigan, and the University of West Indies at Cave Hill, these are examples of higher learning partners. So one of the things that the Mellon Foundation has done for us is they've enabled us to have outreach to these different higher learning partners. So these are people who typically are in the very later parts of their undergraduate study in college, but more likely in their graduate work, and they work with us with knowledge that we are attaining through our study at Sylvester Manor of the history of Sylvester Manor in furtherance of their own academic knowledge. They help us, they help us grow in our understanding of our, of what we have at Sylvester Manor while they are continuing their own studies.
Do they come to the Manor?
It's a combination of coming and going. So for instance, with the Bard Graduate Program. So the Bard Graduate Program, this is material culture. So the Bard Graduate Program has a focus on material culture, and so for instance, the students in that graduate program will focus on objects in our collection as a matter of study. One of the things that we might work with them, for instance, we packed an enormous number of teacups, because of the number of Tea and Tree, which we just talked about. We have hundreds and hundreds of teacups, and so it may be that in the coming semester, there'll be a program at the Bard Graduate Center where students in that program will be studying the teacups from Sylvester Manor.
Okay, Primary Secondary School Field Trips.
So these are done during the academic year, and a field trip is a field trip. They, they come with their teachers, with their aides. They come on buses. If they come from the Shelter Island School, you might see whole, you know, grades of kids, two or three grades together, walking right down 114. two or three grades together, walking right down 114, and they come right in the front gate or they go to the farm. Tracy has been organizing those programs for many years and works with curriculum people at the Shelter Island School District to help develop a curriculum for those field trips so that they're very enriching for the kids who are coming there. I know one of the big deals for them is when they finally get to go actually walk into the house and see what goes on inside the house, because a lot of it is outdoor activities. As you can imagine, with kid groups, children. So it's best if you can have them running around outdoors. But the older kids finally get to come into the house, and they get to see inside the room. Fifth grade, fifth grade. So they have been back several times before they've left.
The primary, secondary school, school break programs?
The school break program again was an answer to what to do with kids during the school breaks for parents who need coverage because their own paid time off doesn't match up with the time off that the kids have. And so these are programs that are tailored to those school breaks that might have a small group of kids, it might have a bigger group of kids. We try to do them in a thematic way.
Summer youth programs?
This is Tracy McCarthy, our director of operations. Hi, Tracy McCarthy. Summer youth programs, we have for nine weeks during the summer, and that welcomes childrens ages two through 14 to the Manor. All the programming is conducted outdoors. We have anywhere from 60 to 75 kids on the property every day, depending on what programs are going on. They generally happen in the morning. We have a few that happen in the afternoon. And we use basically the historic core portion, which is around the Manor House, and then also the farm for certain days and certain projects and certain activities.
All right, historic preservation category, I guess, burial ground studies?
So the burial ground studies, we talked a little bit about that earlier.
You know, I think Stephen answered the question about that. Collections preservation?
So collections preservation is something that's ongoing. We had what's called a collections assessment for preservation report done at the Manor in 2019. That's something that's required as a first step if you are an organization that has collections. As you know, we acquired this property. It came with all of these buildings, and all of these buildings were filled with things. And those things also came into our possession. And so we've been sorting through what our responsibilities are and how to best manage them. And we're following the advice that we're getting from experts. And step one was to do a collections assessment and preservation. We are looking currently to begin the next phase, which is bringing experts in to help us make sure that the way that we've been inventorying and packing the collections inside the Manor House, which are getting our first and targeted attention, because if we're going to do this work at the Manor House, we have to take everything out of the house and store it elsewhere. And so it's very important to us that we focus first on the Manor House in terms of our collections management. They've helped us with things like creating appropriate policies for how to handle collections and whatnot. And eventually will help us shepherd through a necessary charter. We're not at the point yet where we're ready to apply for that charter, but eventually we will be applying to New York State for a charter to hold collections formally.
Julie, can you just give the board an example of what type of collection?
We have sort of all the standard categories of collections. We have objects. So objects, again, not to belabor the teacups, but again, we have hundreds of them. We have objects, we have archival materials. So when, in the years leading up to the transfer of Sylvester Manor to the nonprofit, there was a focused study that resulted in many materials, many archival materials leaving Sylvester Manor and being taken into the possession of New York University. They have since been catalogued, they've been digitized, are available for anybody to see. It's photographs and letters and all kinds of materials on paper. Probably about 10,000 items. We have an equal number still at the Manor House of letters, photographs, journals. One of the things I looked at the other day was Samuel Smith Gardner, who lived there in the 1820s. It's the stubs from his checkbook when he was writing out checks to people as part of his law practice. You know, it's just amazing how much material is there. We have a tremendous collection of photographs. Professor Horsford and his family, he was a chemist. And so the family, very early on, very early days of photography, were engaged in all the different types of photography. And we have photographs from tin types up to recent slide carousels that belong to the Fisks that we need to catalog and say what they are and keep them safe. So when we talk about collections preservation, that also includes volunteers. We welcome volunteers who have some experience. It does look good to have people come who need to be taught everything. But we've had volunteers come and help us and learn with us as we do the preservation. When we find things, that helps feed the information that goes out on social media. It will help us when we create programs in the future and whatnot. So that's very much an educational function of Sylvester Manor.
All right, so now we're into nonprofit and municipal partnerships, Cornell Cooperative SPAT Program?
So the Cornell Cooperative SPAT Program is something that Kate Rossi-Snook has run in cooperation with restaurants and other distributors of shellfish. So people go out and they collect the shellfish. And we allow them to have space back by our pole barn on Nann Mary Road, where the shellfish within the shells, now these fish.
Which shells?
These are shells, thank you very much. Are loved to cure. They need to cure as part of the process of then using them to grow this SPAT for oysters and build the reefs that are now being built in. A couple, a couple, over by Renn. So we work with them to help give them space so that they have room to pull their truck and ladies and gals, and then those different seasons of curing go on.
Peconic Land Trust?
Peconic Land Trust is one of our preservation, land preservation partners, and a very early one. The Peconic Land Trust has a program that they do periodically called the Peconic Nick that has come to Sylvester Manor. They bring people from all over the East End who are contributors and donors to the Peconic Land Trust. They have a big picnic, and it takes place on land they helped us preserve. And this helps bring the reality of Sylvester Manor to a much wider audience than we will be able to reach out there with support and assistance.
Perlman?
Perlman Music Program, we have a really wonderful as part of our summer youth program. Some of the students from the Perlman Music Program came over and performed recitals for our students and then had instrumentated shows, which are really wonderful opportunities for the kids to maybe handle a cello for the first time in their life or a stand-up bass. I watched one little three or four-year-old holding a stand-up bass. I was like, wow. They've never done that before.
Shelter Island Public Library Talks?
So that I sort of touched on before when I said sometimes, especially with the library. Now, not really having a facility of its own that's large enough. We will work with the library to provide our space on our porch or on our lawn to have a little gathering or workshop. Those are usually free of charge.
Shelter Island Public Library Storytime?
In the summertime, the children's librarian actually comes to the farm stand and holds the storytime, which usually occurs here on Saturdays in the library in the other seasons, and has it at the farm. And the kids are there with the ducks and the chickens and the hay bales and the fruit and the vegetables and the flowers. That gives them an opportunity to interact in nature on the farm.
All right, open space recreation and community benefit, constructed wetlands, wastewater, public restroom?
For a long time, there were very limited public restroom facilities on Shelter Island, as you may know. And Sarah Gordon led the charge to create public restrooms at Sylvester Manor. They're open seasonally and available to anyone who wanted to use them. And these are linked to this constructed wastewater system that was sort of a precursor to the IA systems that we have now. And it was funded as a pilot program and is still going well.
Land preservation with partner organizations and municipal entities?
So this is us working with the town, working with the Peconic Land Trust, working with Suffolk County and other entities to preserve land. The educational component of that, and I know Gordon can appreciate this as a former head of the Community Preservation Fund, is that sometimes people don't understand all of the dynamics of using public funds or even privately raised funds to preserve land, especially when you're preserving it for agricultural purposes. It can sometimes feel like everything should just be left exactly the way it is. And we've had to educate people about the opportunities that are available, that are remarkable opportunities to use Community Preservation Fund funds to lie on places like the Peconic Land Trust in Suffolk County and the town of Shelter Island to preserve farmland so that it can actually be kept in agriculture and we don't lose this capacity of our property specifically, but also as something of importance here for the town of Shelter Island.
The Town Managed Deer Hunting Program?
So the Town Managed Deer Hunting Program is something our groundskeeper Gunnar Rissman has worked with the town for many years to arrange for hunters to have valued hunting positions within Sylvester Manor. We closed the property, we had to close our trails for a couple of months during the town managed hunt. It's an opportunity for people, if you have somebody who wants to learn how to hunt, it's a safe place to go and teach somebody how to hunt. There's not a lot of places that are big enough where it's quiet enough that you can actually get a chance to have a successful hunt. But Sylvester Manor is one of them right here, and it's a highly valued program.
Trails?
Our trails are open to the public from dawn to dusk. They have been created and marked with the help of. Yes, and we also have created a walking tour app. The walking tour app is with the assistance of students and the.
Come on, Tracy.
Walking tour app that the kids put together. The walking tour app, we have, each trail is marked with identifiers along the map. And then a couple of years ago, as part of our curriculum work with the school, the fifth graders as their final project for a piece that was focused on the indigenous people and where did they go. They contributed a portion to the walking tour app. So when you listen to it, you hear their voices and what they learned as a result of that. And that's just an example. We try to find in everything that we do a way to involve local people, locally, children especially, so that they can be aware of this space and begin to understand more about the history by actually walking around in this museum.
Quaker meetings?
The Quaker meeting is something that we are not really responsible for, but we allow to continue. It's continued for a very long time there. There was a little bit of a hiatus, and then it sort of was started up again in the 70s, I think, especially during the protests around the Vietnam War. It became a locus of gathering for people, and that has just continued. It's a quiet meeting, and they come on Sundays and have access to the property for as long as they want to stay there. And if it gets cold, they can move the meeting to another location.
And then water access at Dearing Harbor?
So at Second Bridge, we do have a piece of property on the far side of the curve in the road. Right after you come to Second Bridge, there's a little beach there. So kind of from the bridge, kind of around the corner to where the, pretty much where the guardrail ends. That belongs to Sylvester Manor. It is open to the public. It is a very rare opportunity for public access to Dearing Harbor. I think it's the only public access to Dearing Harbor. And it's a favored fishing place for a lot of people. It's a place where people can come with their kids, they can go to Snapper Derby and teach a child to fish.
In order to private events, small gatherings such as birthday parties, celebrations of life, rehearsal dinners and reunions?
These are in frequent, kind of depending on what our capacity is, depending on the relationship of the person in the community. It's not like we're a birthday party venue that anybody anywhere on the East End can come and have a birthday party there. But if there is a member of the community for whom Sylvester Manor is a special place, and they want to organize something and it fits with our scheduling, perhaps it's a gathering after someone has passed away. And this is an opportunity for people to get together and watch the sunset and talk about a beloved friend. Again, they're infrequent and.
Are these things people pay to get access to the space or?
It's a bring in and bring everything out situation. So people do pay for use of the space, but they also have to pay for everything else that they do. They'll need it.
Like a facilities fee?
Yes.
Right, exactly.
And permits are applied for if needed through the town. And permits are applied for if needed through the town board.
And permits for?
If there were some.
Settlers, right.
When, let's go to the large gatherings. Now that's probably where we get to the noise part, right? Okay.
So the largest gathering we have is our annual Farm to Table Celebration. The Farm to Table Celebration is a fundraiser for Sylvester Manor, and it underwrites our capacity to do the work that we do. So while we are able to apply for grants for many of the programs that we do, one of the things that granters tend not to fund is your operation costs and staff. And so we have to raise that money ourselves. And that's done at our Farm to Table Celebration. We have had the Farm to Table Celebration for 12 years. This was our 12th year holding this celebration.
Okay, but in parentheses, and this is going to be where?
Oh, here, this.
Rub is, right? Such as proms, rental or donation of space to partner organizations and weddings?
Right, so I should say the Shelter Island prom rather than proms generally. So periodically, we will be asked to host the Shelter Island prom. As you know, a graduating class from Shelter Island might have 15 people in it. It might be that the juniors come as well, and so there might be 30 people.
You might get some freshmen, sophomores.
Yeah, I know, then I might get some freshmen and sophomores. But it's not a large gathering. It's kids who have spent a lot of time there on field trips. They've gone through the whole program. They may have spent some other time in the summer there. They may have worked as camp counselors and whatnot. And so it's very nice. We're always happy when we're asked to provide it as a venue for the Shelter Island prom.
Okay.
For a prom. Weddings, again, I think we talked about this early on in the hearing process. Stephen addressed that issue. We have very few of them. It is, you have to bring everything in and you have to take everything out. So there's a tremendous expense associated with that, or can be, depending on the size of the event. It's not for everyone. People who come to Sylvester Manor for any kind of event are introduced to Sylvester Manor in its entirety. We let them know what we're all about. They know about the history of Sylvester Manor, and we encourage them to share that information with their guests as well.
Okay.
Is there any facilities fee charged for the weddings?
Like a site fee, yes.
A site fee?
Yes.
A partner organization again might be like the Peconic Nick.
Okay, and so I'm curious about like how something like a wedding would fit into one of our things from 133-6. That's something like that is like.
Again, we raise money through grants. We have a tremendous number of grant funds already, close $8 million for the Manor House rehabilitation. None of those grants fund staff costs. None of them fund our overhead. So if we are able to have a small fee for a little party and a bigger fee for a bigger party, it's another way for us to have unrestricted income come into Sylvester Manor that allows us to do all of the things that we do at Sylvester Manor because it can go to operational expenses that typically aren't all covered by grants.
Do you know how much of your operating cost that you're speaking of is funded by the Farm to Table event? is funded by the Farm to Table event as like a percentage? Would you happen to know?
Sure, sure. I can actually speak to that.
Yeah, thanks.
So the event as a whole raises, this past year was the most successful ever. Raised a little over $500,000, $550,000 total. That, our budget is just over $2 million. So it's sizable, right? It's very significant for us. And we do one of those big fundraising events per year, the Farm to Table. And then we will have smaller fundraising events, you know, revolving around different programming. But that's our major one. Just back to the private events and sort of the weddings in particular. We just looked at our records again. The last wedding we had was 2021. So it's been a while. It's not something that we do on a regular basis. As Julia eloquently said, it really has to fit into the mission. The house is going to be under construction soon. I doubt that many brides will want to get married right around that construction site. You know, so like.
How many, how many inquiries for weddings do you get in a given year typically?
Many, a lot.
Yeah, so the possibility is there.
The possibility is there, correct. Yeah, we've kind of, we've, we've self-restricted that. And as Karen said before, we do whatever event we do, whether it's private, whether it's a concert and we need a public assembly permit, we, you know, we abide by the current rules of the town. And even Farm to Table, right? You need tent permits, you need all of that stuff. And we've worked very closely with the town for many, many years to, to conform with whatever rules there are. We've always done that.
Okay, so if you're, I'm just trying to, so if you're earning, say, $550 this past year and that's a quarter of your operating budget, what's funding the balance of your operating budget? Like where do you get the other $1,000,000 and a half?
Yeah, no, of course. That's a great question. So the rest is, so about a third is from fundraising total. The other two thirds is from program revenue. Program revenue is the educational program, is the farm and farm stands, is cultural programming, ticket prices, right? All of those other things. So it's a, it's a nice blend. It might be more closer to like 40, 60, meaning 40% fundraising donations, including Farm to Table, 60% program revenue.
Okay.
And our budget is $2.2 million angled currently. And we employ, by the way, just so everybody knows too, we employ 15 year-round, not all full-time, but year-round staff, which is quite a few. And then we go up to 80 employees when it comes to seasonal. That's youth program, that's farm seasonal. So we're really sort of, we've become kind of an economic, you know, driver for this, for this community.
And from this list of the many things that happened here, which are the ones that are the revenue generators? Is it a whole bunch of those?
It's a, it's a mix. It's a mix. One of our biggest one, I mean, the farm, which doesn't necessarily appear on here because it's as of right, right? That, that, that's obviously, that's about a, let's say, $500, $550,000, you know, revenue generator. The youth program here, that summer youth program, that is a, that is a big contributor. Tracy was talking about it, for, you know, 60, 70 kids a day. That's a contribution to our. But, but then the rest, it's really a mix. And it's all about getting programs like this so that this portfolio, if you want to call that, of programs really gets the community on the property, involved, engaged, learning about the place, the history, the site, the use. That's what makes this so unique. And I understand your challenge. It also makes, makes it, you know, kind of difficult. I really appreciate the time that you're taking today because it is, it is a complete, complicated project, varied. But it's, that's because it's reflecting a place and a history that is complicated and has evolved and grown in many different ways. So that's what we're trying to do and reflect it back through this slate of programming.
Okay, and just a couple of weeks ago, I read in the report that you now have some mobile kitchen, that they're doing some baked goods for the farm stand, correct? Is that somewhere on these two lots?
That's in that we have a commercial kitchen, actually in the, in the, associated with the containers, associated with the kitchen, sorry, with the restaurants. It is rec, it's, it's there. It's, and we are sort of regulated through New York State Ag and Markets for that use. So the things that we're making in that kitchen is from our, mostly from our farm products, excess farm products, and then we're creating things that we can then sell in the farm stand. So we did include this because it's part of our farm operation, but again, we can, we can revise it.
And, and, and do you use that kitchen at all for any catered events, that type of thing?
No, no, it's simply for this manor maid, what we call manor maid and sort of through our farm.
And then it's sold at the farm stand.
Yes, we could then sell it at the farm stand.
Which is a residential.
Right. We do use it for education, sorry, we do use it for educational programming and for demonstrations as well, but primarily for this manor maid program.
I just have another question about the school. So I know that the forest school is on the property. So they must like, do they rent space from you for the forest school?
Yes, exactly.
I just, I did hear in the course of all of our meetings that there was some concern about children maybe entering buildings at some point that maybe were not safe. So if you could just address that concern. I know it's a forest school, but I know that the kids don't stay outside 100% of the time.
Right, right, and it's mostly outdoors, right? You know, if they need to use the bathroom.
Yeah, but are there any unsafe structures that kids are entering or is that not the case?
No, no. The only structure that they would need to enter is the farmhouse, which is the one that we recently acquired. I would not call that unsavable at all. It's been a residence. Our farmers live there.
Okay.
So if they need to enter a space, if they need to get out of the elements, that is where they would go.
And in the same way that your, like your commercial kitchen is run by, or overseen by the state, is that forest school overseen by like child services or anything?
It's not, no.
Okay.
It's because it's not a certified, that, calling it a forest school is probably not the right terminology. It's an educational program. It's not certified by anybody or anything. It's also not clear that that will continue, just to be completely frank. But I, it does not look to be continuing this, you know, in, in, in this form.
Okay. Don't just, because we're trying to dot the i's across the t's.
I understand.
Curious about that.
I understand.
Okay, thank you.
And are there any plans to, to make space available to other organizations? You know, you have the, the, the folks doing the wellness programs and you have the forest school. They're like, you know, I, I don't, I don't want to wind up in a situation where you say, yeah, Sylvester Manor can do these things. And then if someone else comes in and does something else and, but it's not Sylvester Manor doing it, it's, you know, our, our tenant is doing it. Do there any sort of thoughts, plans for the future doing any of that stuff?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Not at this time.
No, not at this time.
Right.
We really, and this is why we really try to comprehensively sort of list and put down everything that we could possibly think of. Even so, you mentioned the kitchen, which, you know, we should have probably come, you know, put down here. But yeah, no, not, not at this time.
Okay. Does anybody have any other questions for the folks from Sylvester Manor? Tim, do you have any questions here?
Just to reorient this to the, you know, the statute that you're applying under. That, that catch-all provision that puts, you know, the, the uses that you're seeking approval for in the category of something of the general character of something else. I think your letter clarifies that the one, you're, you're specifically limiting that to educational institution, right? There's not another of the enumerated uses that you're saying.
Right, so the other enumerated uses are, are clubs, nursery schools, riding ranges, which is not something that we're, we're seeking to. The permitted uses are the residents and the agricultural pieces of it. So it's really the educational institution, which is not so clearly defined, but for all intents and purposes, it's, it's learning, it's workshops, it's agricultural, and all sorts of kinds of educational programming, which is, you know, where that provision is why we're trying to, to make the next step to that.
And, and so my, my question is, is why not just apply for a special permit for an educational institution?
Because an educational institution technically is a school and to apply for, to be a school, we have to be chartered by New York State.
Right. So I think a little of the challenge that the board will have, but maybe I'm going to speak to it, is that, you know, there's been a description of the uses. When the statute, I understand you're saying that educational institution is not a defined term, but for something to be of the same general character as an educational institution, I think that the boundary of that has to be something. And that, that either means that, you know, the use, like the intensity or the character of the use is like that of an educational institution. Or, or it's something broader than that. I think some of the discussion of some of the, you know, activities that take place are that it's in service of, you know, that if, if something's raising money in service of a program, that's the connection to the educational piece. And I'm not, I'm not saying what's the right or wrong, but that's, that's a spectrum of interpretations that I think has to be, you know, for, for the board to decide if something is or isn't of some general character as an educational institution. That's, you know, something that has to be given thought.
Understood, but if you think of an educational institution or a school as a learning environment, that's what Sylvester Manor is. I mean, they provide between the programming and whether they, they charge a fee to come in and participate in an educational program or workshop or poetry on the porch or, or any kind of storytelling. It, it's all to bring people in and to educate them. And that is really what a school does, right? I mean, I, I think that that, that's a fair assessment of what a school would do. So these educational programs creates a learning environment. I mean, Sylvester Manor is one big learning environment, whether it's cultural arts, education, history, learning about farming. I, I think Julie did a great job in kind of giving the board a really wholesome and thorough analysis of what each of these programming activities are.
I think what we struggle with is you can say that the people attending a wedding or a birthday party are being educated because they're under your roof or on your property. And so we're trying to be diligent in, in adhere into what we've been given in the code. So I'm a teacher, you know, I, I realize that most experiences are educational. But this provision of any use of the same general character as any of the other uses, we can't just say by entering the property for any reason, it is educational. And so that's what we're struggling with.
Right, no, I, I understand that. And I mean, which is, I mean, as a practitioner, you know, we're trying to deal with what we're given, which is the code. I mean, for, for years, we've tried to get the code changed. We've tried to do some type of overlay district. We've met with various town board members, supervisors, over the years, trying to come up with something that, that really defined what Sylvester Manor's uses are. And there is no one clear definition, as you, as you can see, by the vast amount of property that we have, the vast amount of uses. So it is type of, a type of hybrid. So, you know.
A hybrid between what?
Well, the just that they, you know, it, it's not that, that Sylvester Manor is just there to teach about farming. You know, there's other components to it, you know, there's the cultural component, there's the history.
So I mean, we, we call it a multi-layered educational facility?
I, I think that would be a fair assessment. Yes.
Can I just add something also to this, I mean, discussion? Yeah, it's Julie Brennan. So I grew up in an area that had a lot of private schools around the, around the Hudson River in Westchester County. And every one of those private schools was an educational institution. And every single one of them had events in order to raise money, in order to do the educational work that they were doing. When I think of like the Hay Brown School here has different events that they sponsor during the course of the year. My brother was married at the master school in Dobbs Ferry. They rent out the facility for people to get married in because it's a way for them to augment the income of that private school. It's an educational institution. So I think you could find numerous examples of educational institutions that are, have a list similar to ours. I think the point about it being a hybrid is that we cover, as you've said, a wide variety of educational type topics because of the richness of the site. But, but the idea of having a party or an event or a fall festival or something, it's pretty commonly done, I think, at educational institutions.
I think, I, I think that, that the cause for concern when, when is that we say, hey, it's cool to have weddings at Sylvester Manor. And then 10 years from now, 20 years from now, when perhaps there's a completely different board, a completely different lineup of people working at Sylvester Manor, there's 26 weddings every summer. And I think that's the kind of thing that people are worried about. And, and the reason I think that the Shelter Island Association and the Ram, not the Shelter Island Association, excuse me, the Hay Beach Association and the Ram Island Association have both asked us to give as narrow an approval as possible, allowing the continued educational programs that you're doing, but to be very careful about the possible catering, party, wedding kind of thing going forward. And that's not a reflection on you, Julia, at all. It's, it's a concern for the future. And nobody wants to wake up in 20 years and have this be a different thing than what it is now because we've given an approval for something like that. And so I think we really have to be very careful in what I said once before, kind of threading the needle on this so that you all get to continue doing the stuff that you're doing and the people of Shelter Island feel that they know it's going to stay this kind of way.
You asked us at one point to, I believe our attorneys spoke with one another about, do you have any limitations that you'd be willing to volunteer for?
I happen to have that.
And we kind of ran it under the flagpole, trying to say, okay, let's have compensation around these things. And that kind of got.
I would say this, Julie.
Didn't, didn't land.
And, and I think what happened was, because we had asked you for a list of the programs, okay? And then in the attorney talk world, maybe it became a list of limitations. And it was, one thing is one thing and one thing's another thing. Right, and so that, maybe that's why it was, maybe felt a little lead balloonish that day. I don't know.
But we are open to the idea of, you know, these kind of imposing limitations. We don't want to have reputation of, you know.
It's a big question going along with that. So on this list here, it says on the small and large gatherings, it does say frequency up to eight and up to four. Is that what has taken place in the past or is that what you're proposing for the future?
So the, the small was eight and the larger one was four.
I can, sorry, I can interrupt that.
This is not a chart.
Yeah.
It depends on the, it depends on the year. Every year, it's a little bit different. As I said, like for weddings, we haven't actually had a wedding since 2021, right? But we've had a lot of smaller events since then. It's just kind of what we've taken, taken on. So this is probably about the, maybe it's a little bit over, but about the average of what we do every year in terms of both large events and smaller events. Remember, what we're grouping into these larger events are our own fundraisers. So I just want to be clear about that, right? So.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Tom, did I answer?
It does, but when you look at listing of the season, spring, summer and fall, that's 12 to 16 weeks of four, eight, six, four months of a Saturday every month. I guess what we initially, what we were asking was, is there going to be something every weekend?
Yes.
You know, and is it going to be a wedding every weekend? And, and that's why when, when I'm asking up to four or up to eight.
Oh, I see. This is about what we're doing every, this is an annual number.
Right.
Up to four per year.
Right, it's not four, this, this.
And that's why then the question comes, is this what's proposed moving forward or?
Well, I think in our previous correspondence with you, we had, I'm sorry, I don't. Well, I think in our previous correspondence with you, we had, I'm sorry, I don't quite recall, but we had proposed a limitation of, let's say, like up to, I think it was 10 events.
Special events.
Special events per year, although I'm not sure if it was defined as larger or smaller. I'm sorry, I don't.
I, I think that was generalized.
But as Julia had mentioned, and I think as we had proposed earlier, you know, if we wanted to talk about some, you know, some cap on that number, I do think that that's something we, we could consent.
Right. We, we actually, Christina, can we pull that up, the, the, the limits that they had proposed? Brought half your office, if you.
Yeah. Oh, great. Thank you.
Here we go. We, we have it up on the screen now. And that's from June 11th.
Right, that's correct.
So.
Again, maybe it was, you know, us getting caught in the crosstalk. There should be things that have to do with square footage. There should be things that have to do with the number of events and the number of people at an event. And so we were sort of trying to say, we're open to everything, things help us. This is, this is not, this is what we will accept. This is us talking to you saying, what do you propose?
Okay.
Right. And, and this obviously was before we put this chart together, bringing it down to the board.
Okay, but like in, in the proposed conditions, you have 12 programs, no more than 12 programs that attract more than 320s per day in a calendar year.
Yeah, I think that was a, literally us just not, not, not really knowing where we were.
There was for something for the, right, for the board to consider.
Put it out there and say, we're open to limitations and we're happy to talk with you about your concerns. We hear the community's concerns, we totally understand them. I spent, just, just for perspective, and again, in the future it may be different, but right now, any event that we have at Sylvester Manor is all hands on deck. We move tables, we open foldages, we, we put out tablecloths, we bulldoze it back up again. We're constantly stopping what we're doing to go and help with this. We have very limited capacity, but we have a wonderful staff. I mean, everybody pitches in to help everybody else. You know, when Alice Clark is trying to put together a concert, we're all going to help Alice get that thing set up so that it's a success. And we have a limited capacity. I think this especially, this bottom one there completely exceeds our current capacity.
Right, yeah.
So we're happy to talk, you know, frankly about.
Okay, I, 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 I mean, I, look, I think after tonight, it's just going to be us talking. Hopefully, hopefully this is, this is the end of the line for this hearing, right?
Call this out.
We'll see. All right. Does anybody else have any question, any more questions for the Sylvester Manor folks? No? All right. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you. We're available for.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody from the audience like to speak? Mr. Gainer, please.
Hello, Mike, I am at Topps Lane. I'm a directly adjacent neighbor and I've been very vocally opposed to this application, because everybody knows. I'll try and write it, write it in. I get pretty passionate about this topic, so I apologize. Like three weeks ago, I went over to the History Museum for the first time. I'd never been there and before, beautiful building. And I met with Victoria Kingsbury, the, is the archivist, she's in charge of the History Museum. So Shelter Island History Museum. There is literally not a reference to Sylvester Manor inside of the Shelter Island History Museum. Not Nathaniel Sylvester, not the word Sylvester, not the word Manor, and definitely not the word slavery. Anywhere inside of the, inside of the museum. That's bizarre. The guy founded the island and, and settled it and this was the headquarters for a slave plantation for 200 years. I think that's very odd and I think that's a, a problem that somebody needs to address inside of this community, Sylvester Manor and its relationship to slavery in our history. What I think, and I think it's fallen in your lap. I realize it doesn't fit neatly into Chevron 133, like their application, but it's out there and I think it's your responsibility as a board to address it in some way. At least think about it because it's not just, it's not something that we have to address in this room or even on Shelter Island. This, this is a national landmark, Sylvester Manor. This is a, a United States of America thing, right? This is really, really important historical site. And all of the things that they're talking about doing there have next to nothing to do with what that place is. Their application makes it sound like they've always been there. They haven't always been there. That place was a legal conforming use. It was a single-family residence up until 2006, when Alice Spiss passed away. They took it over in 2009 and the entire tenor of this application is so ridiculous. They're, they're, they're being so obnoxious about, we'll consider doing this and we'll consider doing that. They've been operating illegally there for 15 years as a corporation. These folks are, that work for the Manor, this is not a benevolent organization. They have a $1.5 million payroll line. These folks are making hundreds of thousands dollars a year running a business over there. And it sends a really, really horrible message for everybody inside of this community, that kind of corporate citizenry. They've had all the resources in the world that could have cured this like every other not-for-profit corporation or every other organization in its community. We all know how the whole permitting thing works, right? You ask for permission, then you go, if you get permission, you go do the thing. They did the thing. Now, 15 years later, they're asking for permission and they're dictating what they will agree to and what they won't agree to. That's really, really unacceptable, in my opinion. It sets a really bad example for everybody. You know, how did we get here in the first place? A lot of people really want to talk about that. How did the town government allow them to operate like that illegally for 15 years? When people get in trouble all the time. You say you folks don't take enforcement. That's not true. Almost exactly a year ago today, an identical situation came in front of this board. I, I brought this up to you before. I've said the zoning board, I printed these out for you, it's a copy of a stop work order. And I've said the zoning board has a responsibility to take enforcement. If you say no, the zoning board doesn't have a responsibility to take enforcement. This is for 60 Smith Street. That's a big stop work order. They went over there, that's the Soros property where they erected a deer fence. They received a stop work order. Sylvester Manor has done the exact same thing. They've got a farm over there, they've got illegal deer fences, they've done all these things. Sylvester Manor's been operating for 15 years. They've never once received a stop work order for anything that they've done over there. They have illegal parties, they have illegal events, they've never been cited for anything. That's a real problem. And I think this board has a responsibility, as you say, take a narrow look at this application and consider the performance of this, of this group of people and how they've acted. Can we trust that they're going to do what they say they're going to do? Who's going to take enforcement action going forward? If they say they're going to have 10 events, who's going to do that? Because no one has ever done that before. I had to chase Mickey Chi around for three months from February until April of last year to get him to cite him. That's the reason we're here today. I was the one who uncovered the fact that they were operating illegally, that they never had a special permit. I had to bring it to the town's intention. Then I had to chase the building inspector and the town attorney around for three months to get them to write a two-sentence citation. And so now we're going to talk about putting these guardrails in place that who is going to, who's, who's going to make sure that that happens? This entire application, you folks are showing incredible bias towards this applicant. If anybody else submitted an application like this, the thing would be tossed out the window. They have three lots, adjacent lots that are excluded from the application. They're all, they're all directly attached to the, to the, to the main lot that's on the application. Why are they being excluded? That doesn't make sense. They're all owned by a not-for-profit educational institution. They're all adjoining lots. Why are they being excluded? That, that doesn't make sense. So they're attempting to legalize half of an illegal property? That doesn't, why would we do that? And what are they up to? Why would they have those three lots excluded? 82 North Ferry Road, the special, the, the old farmhouse that they've just told you, they have, they're using it as staff housing and office space over there right now. That's not included inside of the application. The illegal deer fence isn't included inside of the application. None of these things are included inside of there. It doesn't make any sense. So you're suggesting that you're going to close the hearing? If you ever wanted to jump in and tell me to shut up, now would be a great time because those lots aren't even in the application. I shouldn't even be speaking to them. So that doesn't make any sense. That application is just woefully incomplete. I sat out there the other day when they had their, 8:30 in the morning, when they have their hundreds of kids coming through there, I almost watched five accidents take place because that narrow wall that goes inside of there, two cars can't pass at the same time. If I were coming in here and I had acquired that property off of Alice Spiss and I'm like, hey, I'm going to go start an event business over there, you folks would have asked me for traffic studies, environmental studies, all of this stuff. They haven't been asked to produce any of those things. That's really it, guys. That's all I've got. This, that application's incomplete. I don't think you should close the hearing. I think you should keep it open. I think you should ask them to give a significant level of detail. This is a really, really, really important historical site. It's got impact not just on this island, for the entire country. I think the uses that they have over there are wholly inappropriate. That place is principally a former slave plantation. There are hundreds of people who were abducted from the southern horn of Africa. They were brought here, they were placed into forced labor, they were tortured, their wives and their children were killed, they were murdered and they're buried over there. And all those other things that they put inside of there, all those other benevolent mentions that they put inside of there, they're all rounding errors to what that place really is all about. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Please step up and state your name.
I'd like to speak in favor.
Please state your name, sir.
My name is Greg Cranford. I spoke at the last hearing as well, in favor. I, I first have a question. I should know this maybe, but I don't. Is the way this, I'm just a member of the public, I'm not affiliated with Sylvester Manor. Is the, is the way this is being approached by the ZBA and I suppose the applicant, is it delaying the preservation and restoration projects that are planned for preserving the Manor House?
That's a question I can't answer for you, sir.
So the two things aren't linked?
I don't know if it's delaying stuff or not.
Is this application also linked to the construction of the?
No, 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 it's not. They, they.
They can start construction.
No, they cannot. Okay.
So the applicant chose to link them in a catch-all?
I see. So that's my question. The reason I'm asking is I am on board of trustees of another preservation foundation. And I, as I brought up in June, keenly aware of how important these grants are that I know the Manor is received, both national and state. And I'm concerned that the length of time that it's taking to determine what should happen with Sylvester Manor puts these grants, some of them, and I don't know the date, so I could be speaking without a great deal of knowledge on this, but it's, it's a general concern.
We have, um.
The time being, you know.
Yeah, we have asked for clarity so that we can make intelligent decisions. So there hasn't been no intention of dragging this on at the expense of valuable grant money. So it's, it's the nature of the, of the process, unfortunately.
Well, wouldn't it make sense for the process to be bifurcated so that restoration, preservation projects for the Manor House could proceed if, if that's what was deemed important?
We hope we're nearing the end of the process tonight.
Okay, I, I hope so. I'm not part of this zoning intelligence because I don't really function. But it seems to be painful.
It's a little bit painful.
It's pretty painful over here.
Because I think we all have a goal of saving the property and the Manor House.
Thank you.
Anyone else? State your name.
By North Ferry Road. I don't know if how many of you were around when Itzhak Perlman and his wife came to the town to convert the conic lodge into his music school. And if you remember that, there was a very, very contentious hearings with the, with the town board and Glenn Wantington, among to others, about giving up a lot of their pre-existing non-conforming uses that the property had. And it extended for over probably a year before they were even allowed to begin their, begin their program, delayed them a long time. And it was dramatic and I was, I was really, I wasn't speaking very much to the town board at the time, but I listened very carefully. And I was kind of shocked at the, at the rights that the guy gave up to, you know, in, in the future of what, if, if he decided not to, to give up his school, what he could do with the property. Couldn't turn it back into a motel. He couldn't, you know, you know, the zoning would be, you know, whatever the, the zone was, he'd lose all that conforming, non-conformity. And so here we are today and I have to say that I agree with, you know, some of what Mike's saying here about that they've been operating without, you know, restraint for, for a long time. And if you go back to, you know, the reason why, you know, Evan gave the, gave the property away or whatever, someone maybe a little disgusted and wanted, you know, feel that he wanted to benefit from, from such a history. That was my feeling and that I got from him. But, you know, he, he did give it to, founded this, what he thought was, you know, a very, you know, a healing type of situation to give it to an educational farm. And I, and disclosure, I'm a vendor of Sylvester Manor. You know, and I dealt with the staff and, and everybody there was very encouraging to me with, with my business on the island. They gave me space to, to sell oysters very early on, my business. I was there all winter, you know, and I sent my, my, one of my children, my kids to, to the camp there. Anyway, and I think they gave a scholarship to, to locals at, at that time. So there, I have had interactions with the, with, with the educational form. But on the other hand, is I, I see that they've done things, you know, and expanded where other, you know, in a way that, you know, they just felt that they could. And I understand that they tried to work with other administrations, you know, with Jim, you know, Doherty and trying to, well, what can we do here, Jim? What can we do? And Jim's like, yeah, just do it, you know, and, and we'll talk about it, you know? And so they were encouraged in that way and then, you know, the.
Can we not disparage any people in your public comments?
Did I disparage somebody?
I believe some of your comments are a bit disparaging.
Okay.
Thanks.
I don't know.
No. No?
Well, all right.
Absolutely not.
Okay.
Okay. Anyway, so, so the, and let me get to, so. So the, so the farm, like I said, I, I've had interactions with them, and at positive ones. And, but I think they're here and I think there should be a cost to them, you know, to the farm for doing what they've done. But at the same time, letting them continue to have something that they've done. Now, you know, the farm is really centered on the Manor House. You know, I mean, obviously Sylvester owned the whole island, right? And, you know, Hay Beach, that whole property there was one of the last pieces that they, they sold off, you know. pieces that they sold off, you know, as a development right, you know. But it's mainly focused on the Manor House. And they have other pieces of land. And I think that, one of my ideas is that Sylvester Manor should focus on the Manor House and the surrounding area of the farm. And they should, they should give 20 or 50 acres to the town. And the town should, you know, put that in trust for 40 years to another generation so that they can decide what to do with it. And let Sylvester Manor operate with their farm and their building. I don't care if they have weddings. You know what? Let them have weddings. But I know some people don't. You can decide about that. But I think that there should be a cost to them for this. And I might not be selling them t-shirts or anything anymore, but I'm sorry I had to tell you this. And.
Damn right.
What's that? What's that, yeah?
I said, damn right.
Damn right, okay. The Wizard of Oz right here just told me damn right. Okay. He's the guy behind the curtain that's pulling all the strings everywhere. Okay, so that's it. So now I can, so now I can stop.
Excuse me, if we can please keep the comments from the audience?
Well, don't get anyone to talk.
Because I have somebody here talking. So please, audience members.
Yeah, wait for your turn.
Just wait for your turn.
Okay.
Bert, you may continue addressing the board.
I'm just about done.
Okay.
All right. I think you should keep the hearing open and, you know, hear exactly what the plans are. And like I said, entertain the idea of splitting up. Sylvester, like you said, the place was created by a piece of paper. There's really no skin in the game, you know, for anybody. It's not my house, not your house. The board of directors personally don't own it, right? It was just created out of something. And so I don't know who's going to hurt. It's only going to help the town if you do something like this, the future generations. And, you know, it's really, you know, do I want to say about, you know, the party? If these people love it so much and they want to support it, do they really need to have a party there under a big tent to give money? I don't know. I guess they do. But, you know, if you love for it, you give anybody. All right, I got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Please step up to the left and state your name.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I'm Mr. Board Counsel. My name is Albert D'Agostino. I reside at 30 Gardeners Bay Drive, Shelter Island. And I had not expected to say anything tonight. There's two very brief comments that I want to make. One, I apologize for speaking out from the audience, but I was reacting to a limitation of what a presenter was saying. And to me, there was a constitutional issue there. I'll put that aside, but my apologies for speaking out. Secondly, and I guess this is a neutral comment. There was a case, and I didn't look at it before coming tonight because I said I did not expect to speak. My recollection, it was the New York State Court of Appeals. It was Collard versus the Incorporated Village of Flower Hill. Tangentially, there was two connections to Shelter Island. Because Collard had a house in Shelter Island, this had nothing to do with that. And your former interim counsel is the village attorney for Flower Hill. But the state, the case stands for or stood for because I have not jeopardized it or gone further to make sure that it was not overturned. The principle of contract zoning that, and in my recollection, New York is one of the few, if not the only state in the Union where contract zoning was upheld. Where if somebody wanted something, they would give up something, enter into an agreement, the agreement would become covenant, binding covenant on the property. And I think that's sort of what Mr. Waif might have been referring to generically. And Mr. Collard tried to attack that twice in the future years looking to expand his building in Flower Hill. And the state court of appeals upheld that decision. So it stands for the principle of contract zoning. Obviously, the applicant has a very worthy piece of property and in terms of the benefits that the community derives from it. So I'm not taking a position for or against. I'm just pointing out that I think there is a tool that you can use if you want to limit it. But I would defer to you, counsel, to check and see if it's that case is still good law. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else, please?
Well, 25 North Ferry Road, not associated with, never spoken at an event like this. I found it pretty fascinating, a tree town. It's a pretty tiny going through. I just want to say a couple of things. One, I don't recognize the people that have been talked about here at Sylvester Manor. I have no idea whether they willingly, 15 years ago, decided to do all this stuff, break the law or not. There's no one I know at Sylvester Manor that does anything that tries to do exactly what Mr. Gaynor says should be done and is being done, which is to recognize an incredibly important national resource that needs to be cherished and brought forward in a way that's responsible. My second point is everything we're talking about here, trying to use this rule that exists to find a way for Sylvester Manor to move forward, is nothing that any other charity or for-profit organization does. The purpose of the charity has to be fed in multiple ways, otherwise it won't exist. And if you restrict what the manor can do to provide all this education too much, it just won't be able to exist. And so I would ask that you do conclude. I agree with Mr. Cranford. There are two things going on. One is incredibly important to the fabric of this memory. And the other is how it's financed and how it's moved forward and how everyone can be involved in it. I've lived on Shelter Island, a part of Shelter Island for the last eight years. It's an extraordinary privilege for anyone to be part of this incredible place. And at the heart of this thing is this organization. And I just don't recognize the way it's being talked about here. So I would urge you to come to a conclusion, and I'd urge you to come to a conclusion to allow, within the rules that you set, that they seem so focused on obeying around all the events that you allow them to move forward. That's all I want to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please just step on up.
Phil Mastro, I'm president of the Hay Beach Association. I've been up here at Pride. I want to compliment you guys for what you have done and the details that you have been able to get. And I want to compliment Sylvester Manor for coming back and making things a little bit clearer. I think everything is moving in the right direction. I want to reaffirm our position that we would like to see the Manor House renovated as soon as possible and that you can regulate the activities that have been going on. And I think you have been trying to figure out the best manner to do that without going over. So I think at this point, you're closing the hearing. In that, there was a lot going on tonight. You might leave it open for written comments for a short period of time in case anyone after they see things tonight, they say, hey, I need to get something else in. My main point though for tonight, and I know I've said this before. When you get to the point that you want to approve this, we ask that you try to do that in the narrowest possible manner so that it is not precedent setting. That you recognize the uniqueness of Sylvester Manor and the uniqueness of what they do so that for other organizations, it will not serve as a means for them to come in and try to do something else. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please, sir, step up.
David Fregault, the number and road. Just a quick comment. And I know this board reviews a lot of applications for private things, setbacks, building size, building height, some of which may have good precedent, some don't. In this case, a very simple metric is what's the public good? And you can identify a tremendous amount of public good with what Sylvester Manor does. And that's a harder thing to find in a lot of the applications you see. So to me, it shouldn't be an issue to struggle over. It was a generous gift to the island. They're trying to, you know, provide a really fantastic asset to the island and with tremendous public goods. And I think that should be the primary influence that they could your decision-making.
Mr. Fregault, you wrote a letter and. And just seeing. So in return for this generosity, I believe the town of Shelter Island should do its utmost to encourage and facilitate the various uses that take place and are envisioned for the future of the manor.
Right.
And one of the things that it's made this a little difficult for us is that no one has shared for us what is envisioned for the future of the manor. I, you know, we have now gone through exactly what is going on at the manor. But there are times where I feel that there has to be a bigger plan and it's not being shared with us. And that's, that's why we want to take the care in examining what's going on now and make sure that we are careful with what might be allowed to happen in the future. And I think, you know, it goes from easy to hard when you talk about the future as opposed to the present.
I agree, but any organization needs to have the flexibility to grow as people change, as needs change. So, you know, how do you grant the approval without totally codifying what can ever happen there? That's a very tough question. And I am not involved enough to know exactly what their plans are. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Good evening. I'm Peter Wilding, 3 Cobbett Lane. Thank you. I just want to pick up on some of the remarks that a few people before me spoke. And basically, when you think of the magnanimity of this gift, someone giving away 250 acres free for Sylvester Manor Educational Farm. It's been called that since the beginning. We've done education, we've got farming. And all these programs that are run have a synergistic effect on the farm and the farm has a synergistic effect on the education. They overlap continuously. And so why do we have all these programs? Because there's so much going on there. There's so much to learn, so much to teach about. Why do we charge for it? Because we have to pay all the employees that work there. When you think of the number of people that come there and maybe even stop and buy some of Mr. Waif's oysters on the way or go to a restaurant or get a paycheck and buy food at the IGA, this has become a really valuable asset to the island. And if you limit it or tie its hands, you cut off some of the synergy. You either hurt the farm or maybe hurt the education. So my feeling is that you should keep, it is COVID, so there won't be any major effects. That you spoke about having like outrageous number of weddings or something like that. I'm sure even something like that. Mr. D'Agostino, who's I've dealt with on the task force, the shoreline. I found out he's one of the most esteemed attorneys in the state on law. He's been a resident here for many years. His advice, I think, is well taken. So let this place keep on giving. The family gave 250 acres to Shelter Island. Let it keep giving back to the community. And one other thing, there's been all this talk about the burial ground, African-American burial ground. In researching the names of these people who were buried there, a large number of them came from households, Shelter Island families. The hearings and so on, in their wills, had these slaves buried at that slave ranch. So it's not Sylvester Manor. It's not just Daniel Sylvester. One out of every two households on Shelter Island had enslaved people in the early times. So those people may have ended up being buried there. So I don't think, we have to think this is a Shelter Island and a national issue, not just Sylvester Manor. Thank you.
Anyone else? So you ready to close?
We have to talk.
Oh, sorry. Okay. What's that?
Does anyone in Zoom want to?
Okay, anybody in Zoom land want to speak? We see any hands up? Okay, we got a hand up. Pam Demerist?
Yeah, hi there. Good evening, zoning board. Yeah, this is a very complicated application. And I was having trouble determining exactly how many times these events are happening on the manor. You know, the numbers seem to be inflated for some things and maybe deflated for others. It's not exactly clear on the list that they have submitted to me. And I don't know if you see the same discrepancies and concerns. I understand Tom wrote something up about the weddings, but I think there are other things as well. So I would ask you to keep the hearing open and just ask them to define a little better which ones of these events are ticketed events? Which ones are free to the public? Which ones are contributory events? Just, you know, exclusive for those folks to come to the property? And just clarify this list a little better to help everyone understand what it is that's happening and what may or may not be something they are aspiring to occur later and therefore inflating these numbers? Or maybe there's something here that they're considering that they're going to eliminate in the future? But I really do appreciate your due diligence and attention to detail. And I would almost request them to do that to complete the application so it's a little better to understand. And I thank you for the time.
Thank you. Anyone else in Zoom land? Anyone else here? I would like to close the hearing if all of you are proposing the hearing.
I think we've heard on so many different occasions that I think we have earned the right to close the hearing.
Lisa?
Yeah.
Tom?
I'd say so.
Okay. May I have a motion to close the hearing? We'll keep it open for written comments until September 10th, which would be a week before our work session.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Thank you, everyone.
I think before we go on to our next, let's all take a bathroom break here. All right. Our next hearing is 9 Clinton Avenue, O'Connell, continuation. We had asked the applicant and the HPOC to work on a plan for parking and staging. And after some back and forth, we have a description of that plan submitted by Matt Sherman. It's my understanding that the HPOC has agreed to this as well. And anyone want to comment on this? Anybody presenting, anything?
Hey, Phil, Matt Sherman, Sherman Engineering Consulting. I'm here on behalf of the property owners. You basically summed it up right there. We went back and forth with the heights. Also cleared it with the police department and EMS, as well as the fire department. So everybody's on board with the plan. It's basically we're going to be looking at side of the road, parking by the property on Clinton, as well as on Grand, if need be, down by the seawall. The main focus of this was to make sure that we did not block the ferry line at any time. If we brought Riverhead Building Supply, Terry came over. Terry came over and looked at the site and we, we made sure that we could get a truck there next to the property off the road so that they can offload without blocking the road. And we'll have a full-time flagger on site so that whenever deliveries are occurring, we've got somebody there who's a designated person to handle traffic. We've agreed to limit any deliveries to no holidays as well as being completed by 3 o'clock so that there's not a, so there's not any type of impact on the ferry line either during holidays or during, you know, typical rush hour timeframes. So, I mean, all in all, I think it's a, it's a very reasonable, very achievable plan. And I think we'll make, you know, hopefully, the goal of it obviously is to make this as painless for the property owners in the area as well as people using the ferry line and using Clinton Avenue to get down, to get up to the ferry or the yacht club or anything on the other side.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Anybody have any questions for Matt here? You know, we had gone through the application. It really was just hung up on the parking plan.
I had a question about snow.
Okay.
Was that addressed? If it snows? I don't know why I had that in my notes.
During the first hearing, it was brought up. You know, Lori had mentioned that the, you know, the Heights does do their own snow plowing. They've got some larger snow plows, some smaller snow plows. It was brought up by the board that like the town does a snow emergency. And I believe the Heights had mentioned that they would let everybody, you know, throughout the Heights, not just at this site, know if there was a significant event forecasted and we would be along the same line. So, you know, if there was a, any type of snow event that's, that's on the horizon, we would just have to act accordingly, not park in ways that would prohibit snow plowing. Or, you know, if there is large snow and drips and things like that, we'll have to accommodate those with, with deliveries. You know, the, that's gonna, you know, unfortunately, it's hard to plan for those kinds of things. But if they do happen, we do have areas that we can go to with our, with our parking as far as our, you know, employees are concerned and the contractors. And then for deliveries, we'll have to handle it on a, on a case-by-case basis if that becomes an issue.
Okay, thank you. I just had a note. Thank you.
Anyone else? Questions for Matt? Anyone else wish to comment on this application? No? Everybody good with closing this? Okay. Can I get a motion to, and we'll keep it open for written correspondence until September 10? Can I have a motion to close the hearing?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, now, next up, we have 23 Tuttle Road. It says, I thought it was Drive. Matheson, we're going to read, they requested us to reopen the hearing. And so we need a unanimous vote to reopen the hearing. Can I have a motion to reopen the hearing?
That already happened. They already happened.
We just continue.
Oh, I see, I see. Sorry, Christina, I was looking at the paperwork wrong. Okay, so we're just gonna, are we reopening it right now? It's been reopened.
It's reopened, yeah.
We need to, it was written notice, so we need to read the public notice.
Okay, so how about, give us the notice there, Christina.
Hearing will be reopened on the application of Alexander Mappienson, owner of 23 Pedal Drive Shelter Island, New York, which is located in Zone AA over Ritz II A near Shore Overlay. And is more specifically described on the Suffolk County Park map as 700-11-1-15.2. The applicant wishes to legalize unpermitted conversion of existing detached garage to a garage with accessory sleeping quarters. And is seeking a variance from Shelter Island Township Section 133-6B-5B2 to hold 8.4 feet side area so Bagwood 20 is required. Further, an area variance is required from Township Section 133-7E3A for the 203.5 square foot accessory sleeping quarters where 480 square foot is required. We receive a correspondence request for adjournment. I'll go next meeting.
So can I have a motion to adjourn until the September 24 hearing?
I'll make a motion.
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Okay, and then last bit of business we have is the town board asked us to weigh in. They're doing site plan on the application of GR Gardens. And we're just going to send them a memo. We're going to have a little discussion here about this and then see if there's, they asked us if there are any zoning issues with the location of this business on this property. When, when I look at the zoning code, 133-8 District B Business, the first part there is district purpose to provide areas for mixed uses, including residential, business, retail, and other services for island residents and visitors. And so right there, you know, it talks about mixed business uses, including residential. It makes clear to me that you can have residential and business on the same lot in B-zone. And then when you look at permitted principal uses, they have residential. And then under business, you get, see how far down we get? We get to E. And it's the raising or sale of trees, shrubs, plants, flowers, food crops, and the tillage of soil generally. So I think it's a permitted use on the property. And for me, I don't, I don't see a zoning issue with locating this type of business at this property. It is a B-zone property. And so...
Like any other objections, that's not our purview, right? It's like we're just ruling on that.
We're not even ruling.
I mean, I'm sorry. Discussing. Yeah.
Look, we're just gonna, you know, send a memo to the town board if we had discovered, if we thought that there was something wrong with locating this type of business on this property.
Right.
We would do that.
Okay.
And if we think, I, Punch, what do you think?
No, I don't think anything wrong with it because there's a lot of business properties got more than one business on the same piece of property.
Right next door, you have, and then, and then right around the corner, you have two businesses and two or three rentals and at the top.
Right.
Mr. D'Agostino, it's not really, we're not going to...
There, and what you just said about...
Okay, but Ms. D'Agostino, we're not, we're not doing this. We're not doing this. You are not going to speak here.
25 feet.
You are not going to speak here, dude.
I am, I am.
Really not.
It's Resident C, and you're ignoring that. And I'd like that in the record and whatever you're going to do.
Okay, thank you.
But your information is totally incorrect. And it was discovered today. I think you should check with the business, the building department. So I don't know what you, I don't know what action you're taking. And how can you have it without having a hearing and hear the public? This is exactly, what you're doing is you're interfering with the property rights of an adjacent owner. You're depriving me of an opportunity of putting forth the case. And you are very wrong in what you just said and put before.
You can, you can, you can make your points at the site plan review.
Oh, I will, I will.
Yeah, that's the perfect place for it.
And I'm sorry, but, you know, this is the craziest proceeding.
You're not sorry at all.
No, I am.
You're not.
You know, it's not the why here, it's the who.
Does anyone feel that there's a zoning issue with this property?
They should check it.
I'm just looking at the code.
Looking at what's...
No, looking at what's been given to us. Based on what's been given.
Tim, what do you think?
You're 100% wrong.
Based on what we have here.
I had a conversation.
We're not doing this. We're not doing this.
There's not a soul in this page here that's aware of that.
But I can't be heard. I'm telling you, I had a discussion today.
If there, if there's a site plan review issue, you can bring it up there.
It's not an application before this board, right? So that's why there's not a public hearing.
That's right. I don't know what...
Have a just, you've had a discussion. You've been asked, right, by the board, by the town board. And that's something that's going to be reduced to a memo, correct?
Yes.
And the contents of that memo is ultimately going to be a, in the nature of an opinion or recommendation. It's not stating a determination of this board as to the final determination on the zoning. So, you know, I think if had that discussion, if there's a draft memo, it can be circulated and then submitted to the town board.
Okay. I'll craft something, send it out to you guys. Take a look at it. If everybody agrees with it, we'll just send it to town.
Have we ever been asked to make anything like this before?
No.
Will that be a public document?
Sure.
But I just don't understand how you can't take the facts into consideration.
You can take the facts into consideration in the site plan hearing. That's it.
Absolutely.
That's it. All right, can I have a motion to close the meeting?
I'll make it.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.